Mr. Naza?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Abchar?
Here.
Here.
Um, two full of minutes of previous meeting. So move.
Second.
All in favor say yea. Okay.
Yea.
Any opposed? We have a few changes to the agenda. I need a motion and a second to remove item number four B. Move.
Second.
All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Nay. Um, I need a motion and a second to remove item seventeen. So move.
Second.
All in favor say yea. Yea. Any opposed? I need a motion. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove item number twenty-four. All in favor say yea. Yea. Any opposed? Nay. Um, I need a motion and a second to reword item number twenty-six as follows. Resolution ordering and calling tax renewal elections to be held in the city of Salford, Louisiana on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of submitting to the electors residing in the city, two propositions. One, to renew a special ad valorem of five mils for fire protection, and one to renew a special ad valorem tax of five mils for street improvements. Motion and second. So move.
Second.
All in favor say yea. Any opposed? Nay. Now I need, um, and motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. So move.
Second.
All in favor say yea. Yea. Any opposed? Nay. Um, first item on the agenda is a resolution electing a chairman and vice chairman for the city council. Um, under my name. Do I have a motion to elect? So move. Madam Chair, I'd like to elect Ms. Ellender, uh, or to submit Ms. Ellender's name as chair. Second. And, uh, for vice chair, Ms. Ms. Hardy. Probably need to want it, uh.
Hmm?
It's the same.
It's the same.
Okay, yeah. So for chair, Ms. Ellender, and for vice chair, Ms. Hardy. Not a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to speak on this item? Roll call please. Ms. Thomas? Yes. Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
I would like to present this plaque to Ms. Mandy Thomas for her leadership this past year as chairman of the city council.
Mandy, I would like to thank you for your service in this past year. It's been a pleasure. I think this is the first time in four years we got to sit next to one another. It's been a pleasure. So thank you. This, this line moves slowly.
All right, just a few things before I start being the chairman here. Um, um, I'd like us to, um, instead of just blaring out something on the council, please be recognized from the public, please be recognized. Um, also, on the three-minute thing, please try to stay on on task. Um, we're not trying to stop you from talking, but I have observed in the last few years that after about a minute, people stop listening. So try to keep it down to three minutes. We're giving you your three minutes, and if you go over, we'll, we probably will let you go over a tiny bit, but please try to keep it two, three. And if you're on a topic and there's lots of people to talk, try to stay, um, say something different. Don't be repetitive each time you get up because, you know, we don't need to, I mean, you don't need to tell us once you give that point. Um, item number two on the agenda is a proclamation presented to Kai Richardson, Maplewood Middle School winner of the CBS Lake Charles Regional Spelling Bee and contestant for the upcoming Scripps National Spelling Bee. Ms. Hardy. May.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Hardy is very involved in this just as well. Uh, we're here to, uh, tonight to recognize Kai Richardson. Uh, Kai is a thirteen-year-old and attends Maplewood Middle School. He is the winner of the CBS Lake Charles Regional Spelling Bee. Kai is a member of the student council and is also in the, the French and Gifted Program. Kai loves technology, geography, and is very interested in politics, and I'm sure we'll have to talk about that later. Whereas these students are the best of the best, and he will be one of the five students from Louisiana and the other speller to rep, the only speller to represent southwest Louisiana in the Nationals, Scripps National Spelling Bee, the only one from southwest Louisiana. Kai's final spelling word was matrimony. Learned that well. That has led him to the Nationals. Kai, his dream is to, uh, is to hopefully be in politics and become a U.S. Senator one day. I wish you well of that. Uh, we do have a proclamation for him. Kai, congratulations very much, and we're going to give you a copy of this, and this is signed, uh, by all of us in council as well as myself, and we congratulate you on the, uh, proclamation. We're going to step over here.
Kai, do you have any words you want to share?
Yeah.
Tell us what's next. When do you leave?
Come over here. Come sit. You're going to be in politics, you're going to have to learn to talk in front of one. Kick right into that microphone right there. So when are you going to Washington, D.C.?
May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth. And he's going to get to participate, and then they're going to do a little touring, which is impressive. I think that you'll be, uh, very impressed with Washington, D.C., so. Looking forward to it?
Mm-hmm.
Good. And his, and his sister and brother here too, so.
And the principal of Maplewood.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, the principal, Ms. O'Quinn, is here from Maplewood Middle School to recognize Kai and his accomplishments just as well.
Congratulations.
Item number three is to adopt the mileage rates for tax year twenty twenty-three. Oh, I'll turn it over to Ms. Thorne.
These are the same rates that we currently have now, no increase.
I'd like no increase.
Yep.
Does anyone wish to speak on this? I'm not seeing anybody. All right? Please vote.
I'm sorry, who motion and second?
I'm motion.
Second.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number four, uh, is to rule show pause for the condition of the following addresses. I'll take them one at a time. To condemn building or structure located at four twenty-seven, four twenty-seven and a half, and four thirty-five, North Park Street, in accordance with Article nine, section five through two eighty-six through five, five two eighty-six through five two ninety-six. Mr. Sumter, I'm guessing you have?
Yes, ma'am.
State your name and address, please.
Pardon?
Your name and address, please.
Dennis Sumter, uh, one fifty-three Dennis Sumter Road, DeRitter.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't have a problem taking up all of them at one time. Uh, they are currently in bad shape, but we have spent about seventy-five thousand dollars trying to get these places fixed up. Every time we get them, uh, repaired, then people, uh, bamboozled, whatever you want to call them, would come in and destroy it. Um, excuse me. One of the houses, uh, four seven, four twenty-seven and a half, um, was completely redone. You can look at the outside of it and see it was repainted and everything. Um, we put shoot rock in it and, uh, repicked everything. And then one of the storms come along, took the roof off, and the shoot rock got damaged and everything. So we've got to go back and redo that. Uh, one of the other houses, um, would be four seventeen?
Four twenty-seven, four twenty-seven and a half, and four thirty-five is what we have here.
Yeah.
I don't know where the four thirty-five comes in, but, um, it, that's why I said you could take them all in one day. I got to go back in and redo all of them, and I.
That's what you want to do, is go back in and redo them, or?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I want to redo that neighborhood. Uh, it is, it is, uh, in, in bad shape.
Right.
And I'm committed to go in and redo, uh, redo those houses. I haven't been able to do it, um, lately. I've gone through, uh, I'd have paste maker put in and it looks like, uh, and I'm just now getting back on my feet. Uh, I, I just had shoulder replacement, so I got about two more weeks till I can do anything with that. But as, uh, the other properties that I have, I have actually physically done almost all of the work myself, and I plan to do it, uh, on these places, but I'm, I'm getting older, and I know I'm going to need some help to, to do it. So what I would ask you to do is to please give me forty-five days, and we come back and visit it, and if I haven't done substantial improvements, uh, on the properties and made them look better, uh, then you can go ahead and condemn them.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the process? How long?
Um. These homes were brought before the council in twenty eighteen, and they were given permits, and four thirty-five was completely rehabbed. Um, they keep breaking into it, like he says, um, and it, and they, they're tearing them apart again. The four twenty-seven and a half is the one in the back, and it is, it's burnt really, really, really bad. Um, four twenty-seven, the front one, you know? So, I mean, they can be fixed if someone wants to rehab them, but it's going to cost a whole lot of money.
Well, the burnt one?
Uh-huh. The back one, the back one caught fire, that green one back there in the back caught fire. The vagrants come, I'm setting on fire.
Don't you think it's? Chairman, start again?
I don't, right now, I'm, I'm limited on funds. I haven't been collecting rent on a number of places throughout the city because of damage, uh, from the hurricanes and some after that. And so I think I, it would be cheaper for me to go in there and just completely rehab them.
Mayor Sumter, even the one that's burnt pretty bad, I mean, just from the images, is, is destroyed.
I haven't been through that house. I, I need to go through it, and that may be, uh.
One that could.
What I, yeah, I just.
That one, I mean, the roof is completely caked in and stuff. Yes, sir.
It sounds like I'm gonna, uh, the Lord willing.
Mark God.
Yeah. Uh, to, to go ahead and, and demolish it.
On that one.
On that one. Okay, so let me ask you this. I don't think they're safe right now. They're not, they're not, like, boarded up and stuff like that. They're not safe. They need to be safe, for sure, and I know people will break in. I don't know how you're gonna, but when I went by there, none of them are, like, safe to go in.
Um, we have, in fact, boarded them up. I've had, I have new doors put on, and these doors have been screwed into the, uh, framework and stuff so that people couldn't get in.
And, I mean, on that four thirty-five, yes. I mean, and, but it's busted again.
Yeah. I'm, fast as I can do it.
Okay, you're busting it again. Now, you ask about the timeframe. Um, are you asking me for?
How long has it been since you started this process for this one?
Um, when we originally reopened the case? In June. June.
June's last year.
June.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay. What address is that, Shelley?
Four twenty-seven, four twenty-seven.
No, which address was open in June? All of them?
Okay.
But during that time period, is that the time period that you were ill? Tw- from June twenty twenty-two? Is that the time period that you were having some health issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll need a motion and a second on this one. Do we have that?
So what, what do we motion, what do we propose?
Forty-five days.
Do you go through the compensation? Give him forty-five days.
If you give him forty-five days, then we can come back.
So we're, we're.
Madam Chair, please get some of the bag.
Bill? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr..
I just have one question, is that a floodway? Because if it is, we can't sell it from here.
Can we look into this and see if it was a floodway?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, is it a floodway?
Well, we don't have that information right here right now.
Somebody does, I bet, I bet Austin got it. I don't know that answer right now.
And, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion in, I just like even numbers, I'm sorry. Let, allow in sixty days, it'd be easier, I think, for the staff to manage sixty days instead of a full month and a half month, and then, you know, revisit. I mean, it's your district. No, it's your district.
I would.
So July, July agenda?
Pardon?
So sixty days, come back in July, the July agenda? So.
Now, it's to be substantial, and with a substantial improvements.
Okay.
Correct.
Substantial improvement by July, or we come back and condemn?
He wouldn't need to go through the permitting process, come in for inspections with appointment plans, the whole thing.
Yeah, you need to, yeah, pull permits. Yeah, you'll need to pull permits.
So talk to Denise and Shelley about this, if you would, Shelley, they probably, you probably want to leave after this, right? So talk to them about what they need to do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not motion. Next week at the latest, you'd need to be in the process of getting those permits for.
I'm gonna give you my card, just a second. Okay. Thank you very much.
So is there anyone?
And also, we'll also have confirmed the, the flood zone. Do you get any answer to that question?
Or all of them. Because if it is in a floodway, Mr. Sumter, you can rebuild there. You cannot.
Yeah.
Because they, they won't let you. Okay, um, so roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, B has been removed because they.
It's down. It's taken out.
C to condemn building or structure located at six thirty-two Maple Street in accordance with Article nine, section five, two eighty-six through five, two ninety-six, Ms. Hardy. Um, Ms., um, Vanderhem, do you have any updates on that? Other than there have been no comments.
Um, she called and said, okay. Um, I don't, is there anybody here to speak for that?
Is there anyone here to speak at six thirty-two Maple Street?
Hey, we had an update, there was an updated zoning. Oliver, do you have a note from there?
No, that's a, we mentioned.
That was, I'm sorry. You can get out of here.
Which one was? That's not the six thirty-two.
This is six thirty-two.
Okay. Okay. No one is here to?
No one's here to speak, no one's contacted me.
And you said you spoke to the owners?
She called and said she received a letter.
Motion?
Second.
Anyone wish to speak? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Okay, B to condemn building or structure located at twelve oh one Taylor Street in accordance with Article nine, section five, two eighty-six through five, two ninety-six, Mr. Naza?
Is there anyone here for that address? I know that it was recently purchased, if I'm not mistaken. They're in the process.
Yes. Key Vision Homes has bought it. They're going to completely redo the home. They're trying to go through the completion of the sale. Um, he's already met with us, and will be getting his permit shortly.
Yeah, it's a thirty-day extension.
Yeah. We, yeah, thirty days, we'll come back in.
So that's your motion?
Yeah, my motion.
Okay, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Number five is an extension for temporary housing and recreational vehicles due to damage caused by Hurricane Laura for the following addresses. A to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at nine forty-five Beulah Street in accordance with ordinance number sixteen ninety-three MC series, Ms. Hardy. I have to recuse myself from voting, this is related to, uh, family, a family. Um, I'll need a motion and a second, and you see the notes here that said they need a little more time, that electrical still needs.
I'll make a motion to allow them to have more time based on, um, Mr. Jones' inspector's report.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms., okay, uh, Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
And Ms. Hardy, recuse.
Um, B to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at nine Point Setta Street in accordance with ordinance number sixteen ninety-three MC series, Ms. Thomas.
Um, I spoke to the owner, she's unable to make the meeting tonight, they're out of town. Um, she may just need a little more time, so I'm comfortable with the extending it for the, no, six months.
But you don't think it will take six months?
I don't think it will take six months.
Second.
Okay, anyone wish to speak? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Okay, C to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle loaded, located at nine oh six Taylor in accordance with ordinance number sixteen ninety-three MC series, Mr. Naza?
Is there anyone here for nine oh six Taylor? Did anyone appear at the land use meeting? I know they were sent notifications, but did anyone appear at your warehouse? No? Um, does Denise have any updates on this?
We were by there. Well, I think, actually, pardon, I don't know. Um, it looks like they're very close.
Yes.
Security, we have them there, I'm assuming the Zollin and security system, so it looks very close.
Okay. Um, yeah, I agree. I mean, when I drove by, I mean, it looks like they're done substantial work. I just don't want to keep it going on if they're not going to show up, you know?
Um, tried to reach them.
Right, right. I don't know what more we can do.
So will you rule? It's not a rule, we should probably, still should never.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, let's do thirty days, and I'll, I'll try to stop all the residents and spangle the door.
Yeah. A red card on the board.
Yeah, bizarre intimidation, you know?
Okay, so that's your motion?
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to give them thirty days.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Okay, number six. Uh, public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone to AOK Properties, twenty-six sixteen Lena Street from residential to commercial to allow for expansion of current business located at three seventeen Patton Street, ordinance fifty-eight twenty-three, Mr. Naza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Marlberger, okay. Mr. Travis, do you want to go ahead and kind of give us an update of what's going on?
My name's Travis Marburger, five oh one Kim Street, Salford, Louisiana, seven oh six six three. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Salford, uh, graduated Salford High, McKinney State University. Uh, I've been in clo, uh, employed by Kim Cool since oh five, in charge of the day-to-day operations since thirteen, and I've been the sole owner since two thousand and nineteen. Um, Kim Cool's not some big out-of-town business. Uh, we're local, we're, we have ties to the community, been incorporated in the same location since, uh, for over forty years now. Previous to that, we were part of the radiator shop, Kim's Radiator, and they go back to the early sixties. Um, we sponsor many, uh, recreational sports teams, Salford I Track Team, Salford I Band, and we're the yearly sponsor for the Brimstone Museum's Summer Art Camp for Kids. Um, what we're trying to do is basically just add additional floor space, add more production area. We're not changing our operation, we're not changing what we're doing, we're not bringing in different type of equipment, it's going to be the same type of equipment. Most of it's just going to be reorganizing our workflow for a more, um, streamlined workflow. Um, at the end of the day, all that this expansion will entail is moving our north wall sixty foot to the north. Um, there will be no north-facing bay doors. All the doors on the north side of the building will be emergency exits only, which are closed during the day, so there's no additional noise will be propagating into the neighborhood to the north. Uh, we've agreed to comply with, uh, both options for the city requirements as far as, uh, either a six-foot privacy fence or a hedge wall. We're going to do both, or we've agreed to do both. Uh, we've already met with the city on drainage plans, um, they're fine with our draining, uh, drainage plans, it should improve, uh, the drainage of the area. Um, there will be no impact to Allen Street. Seems like most of the concerns are along Allen Street. Uh, there will be no impact along Allen Street as far as traffic goes. All of our current traffic comes out of the south side of the building along Patton Street, and that's how it will continue. I did, uh, spend time, uh, after the, uh, the zoning meeting, um, doing a noise survey, which I did email, uh, to the city. Uh, five days, fifteen points along the road, taking noise measurements, and I have a copy of that with me, city also has a copy of it, and it shows that whether our equipment's running or off, I did it four points throughout the day for five days, so six hundred points of data. There was no, very little, if any, compare, uh, difference between our equipment running and not running. The bulk of the noise was the interstate. Once you get one or two houses north of our building, all you can hear is the interstate. Uh, so any concerns about noise from us? Um, there was one noise complaint that I, I took years ago, uh, what, from what I understand, it wasn't filed with the city. Uh, it was one of the neighbors called, it was some after, an after-hours vendor filling a nitrogen tank. Uh, I dealt with that the, the next day. Uh, to my knowledge, it's never happened again. I've never received another complaint from any other neighbor in the area over any noise-related issues. Uh, I understand they have to live there, uh, but, like I said, we've been operating , uh, from the same area for over forty years with, with no, no complaints in my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We might call you back up, but, um, Mr. Chris, please. Chris?
I'm actually speaking on all three items, um, if it's okay with the council?
Six, seven, and eight?
Six, seven, and eight, because all three affect the, the neighborhood.
That's what you have written down. Are you going to say the same thing on six, seven, and eight?
Yes, I'm only going to present it once.
Okay, all right, um, state your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Higginbottom, uh, address is twenty-five ten Allen Street. Uh, and, uh, so, the expansion of Kim Cool, I personally think is part of a broader, bigger problem in the neighborhood. Uh, which, the expansion of Kim Cool is just simply the most in our face and directly affecting, uh, of us, of these problems. Uh, the problem, basically, it's going to affect us more in many ways than some of the other issues that have been plaguing the neighborhood. All of them surround businesses and business expansions and issues, and if, uh, I think I actually gave a copy of what I hear, uh, the statement I have on that.
This would be this letter?
Yes, that is me. So, uh, as in my, uh, little speech here, uh, I am joining others in my neighborhood in voicing my opposition to the rezoning of properties on Allen Street, Patton Street, and Lena Street for the expansion of the Kim Cool manufacturing facility. Uh, of primary concern beyond the potential disruptions to our homes and lives during and after the expansion is the potential that the approval of the rezoning could set a precedent in which other nearby businesses begin moving in or expanding closer to our homes. The result would likely render most of our homes essentially worthless and unsellable while also pushing, uh, us out of the neighborhood. Some of the neighbors, they're not going to want to stay, uh, if that expansion happens. Uh, I implore the council to not approve the rezoning and expansion. Do not allow Kim Cool and the surrounding businesses, many of which have already been, begun expanding, uh, do not allow them to chip away at our established neighborhood one property at a time, one expansion at a time, one rezoning at a time. Do not allow them to ultimately render our homes worthless and unsellable. That is actually a point that I think somebody else, uh, on the land use board, uh, may have made, that this could basically mean the only person we could sell our homes to would be Kim Cool. At what, half what they're currently worth? I mean, in all seriousness. Um, many of us are raising families in this neighborhood, my own household has been here for a little over ten years. Some of the residents have been here for nearly sixty years and have had multiple generations of their families call these houses home. This is an established, safe, and affordable neighborhood in what is quickly becoming an unaffordable community to, to, community to live in for many of modest incomes. To allow it to be chipped away at by surrounding businesses would be unjust and would likely result in financial hardship for even those of us with fairly solid finances. Uh, I know for us, our house note to buy anything in this community right now would double, easily, over what we currently pay. Just in the past few years alone, we have had one business sitting between two houses try to rezone to put what I understand would have been a mechanic shop. That obviously did not happen. We have had a new convenience store put a pathway for trucks right between two other houses around the corner from us, I don't see how the people who live in those houses stand it. Uh, let's see, what else? We have also had two other business owners buy up land to our homes and then clear it of the trees that once provided a partial buffer between many of us, neighboring businesses, and the interstate. There is no fence that we can put that is tall enough to restore the privacy that we lost to the hotels nearby. In addition, the process of clearing the trees saw debris thrown at our houses by the machinery used. Now, obviously, this is not Kim Cool's fault, but the previous owner of Kim Cool is at fault, um, that is actually who bought the property. Uh, so anyhow, uh, the machinery used threw debris at our homes. Had our child been outside playing in our yard, he could have been injured. We also now have a vermin problem on our block where none existed prior to all of this land being cleared. Now, we have Kim Cool wanting to expand. While we understand the need for business expansion and the, and for the community to provide jobs and growth, this must be in such a way as to be equitable for all in the community. The expansion of Kim Cool will fully benefit that business but will not produce any net benefit for, um, any net benefit at all for us living in its shadow. It will ultimately only produce negative equity for the rest of us. Please, do not allow the expansion of Kim Cool, the rezoning, uh, or the rezoning. I am all for business expansions, but not when it starts threatening, threatening my property value, my family's safety, and potentially leaves us with no choice but to leave and watch our cost of living skyrocket or stay and eat the costs. And when I say skyrocket... Have I? Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. No, no, thank you.
All right, that, um, Cynthia Jones.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Jones, I reside at four thirty Patton Street, and I, uh, own the property at four oh five Patton Street also. Um, I'm not, I'm trying, trying not to reiterate too many of the things that, uh, Mr. Higginbottom said, but we have a problem. Uh, Mr. Bar, Marburger wants to expand his business, and I don't have any problem with, um, him expanding, just not there. Um, the majority of the property owners in the neighborhood, um, that aren't affiliated with Kim Cool or the previous owner, or Mr. Marburger, all live to the east of, um, Kim Cool. Um, so, no, uh, most of us live on Allen or Patton. Uh, we're in strong opposition to the zoning changes for all three items on the agenda, six, seven, and eight, and also in, uh, uh, in opposition to the expansion of Kim Cool. Uh, for these reasons, our property values, as Mr. Higginbottom stated, they're, they're going to plummet, they're already down, uh, because of the bit, of the business there. To begin with, uh, which has not, that building has not been there for forty years. It has not been there since my twenties, I don't believe. Maybe, I don't know, it's close, when, when was the building built, Mr. Marburger?
Which building?
The, the Kim Cool, exp- the whole...
Stephanie was incorporated in nineteen eighty-three. The previous owner had purchased the lots between Allen and Patton in ninety, uh...
Ninety.
In several steps between ninety-four...
Yes.
And ninety-six, the new building, the building she's referring to was put up in two thousand and three, or, two thousand and four.
Yes.
And the office was put up in two thousand and thirteen, which is a small building on the, uh, on the side of it along Lena Street.
Well, the main huge building is one that was finished in...
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three. That's, uh, mainly the one that, uh, has caused our property values to go down, anyway, uh, on with it here. Um, no, no one could put a dollar amount on what our property values for the generation moving forward, you know? My son would probably have liked to keep that property and rent, you know, when I'm gone, rent it out, maybe my granddaughter. We can't put a dollar amount on what we're going to lose on this if he is able to expand, you know? Uh, the company behind me, Burns and McLahan, they apparently have been sold, uh, and is being run by a new owner. Uh, they, their, um, uh, zoning change did not go through, thank you. Um, but if, um, Mr. Marburger's, uh, proposition here, uh, to have all this happen, that may not be the case next time Burns and McLahan, McLoughlin, I'm sorry, uh, on Allen Street, which, by the way, is directly in front of Mr. and Ms. Dewan's house, directly behind my, my house, there is no residence on that. They moved two trailers out and all that was left was business, so what we're worried about, I think, is what's going to happen with that the next time it comes up to be rezoned if Mr. Marburger gets Kim Cool's expansion and zoning change. We're thinking, um, that, uh, it would probably go through, which we're opposed to. Um... Mr. Marber, here's a solution. Can I finish with my solution?
Sure.
Mr. Marburger secures a proper location, more suitable for an industrial manufacturing business where he can expand without infringing on our neighborhood. The property on Patton Street can be reverted back to residential as, as it was intended in the first place by the original developers. Mr. Marburger can sell the property that, on Patton Street to recoup his losses for the move to an industrial area and/or keep it, uh, put a couple apartments there, um, he's got free reign, and that would solve the problem. He would be happy with his expansion, we would get our neighborhood back, and everybody is happy. And I pray the council considers this as if it was your own neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay, that's all on item number six.
I suppose, that's all three. I will repeat myself.
All right, so isn't there anyone else who would like to speak? Uh, what's your name, please? Uh, go on up to the microphone. Ma'am, okay, we'll give you one out after long, go ahead to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Mary, and I live at twenty-five seventeen Allen Street. And as others have said before, the noise we hear is from the interstate, we don't hear anything from Kim Cool, it's rare to hear a sound at all from there. And as, thank you, and as far as the devaluing our homes, do you even know how much that would devalue them, having a business in the neighborhood? I don't really think it would that much, and I don't know of any of them that had their homes appraised before and then again after to see what they would have lost. And Sulfur needs tax money, Sulfur needs businesses. And I'm all for it, and so is it my husband, for letting them expand and letting them do... And I mean, the bigger they get, the more jobs they'll have, and as far as selling out, I could, I could care less if they bought us out at some point later, if they wanted to expand on both sides of the street.
Thank you.
I just, I think it's a good idea that they do get the expansion.
All right, is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Austin, would you go to the color-coded map, just for the sake of clarity, um, and tell us what the colors denote?
Uh, so purple is commercial, and blue is business, and yellow is residential.
Okay, and the, the two lots that, um, Mr. Mar, Marburger, my son, is proposing, can you, uh, point to the area for us?
They are directly located.
Yeah, and that's the two for item number six. Twenty-six sixteen Lena?
Yes.
There's one more, you want to go on up there and state your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Debbie Gilroy, I live at twenty-five twelve Allen Street. Um, I've been at that house since two thousand and three. Um, and I'm totally against the rebuilding, and I just wanted to say, you know, I've been in Sulfur all my life, and it seemed like a lot of businesses are taking away our neighborhoods, and this is, is a good, quiet neighborhood to raise kids, and I just hope that y'all will vote against this and, um, keep our neighborhood, you know? It's going to get to a point a lot of people are going to want to move to Sulfur because there's too many, uh, businesses moving into the neighborhood and it's taking our neighborhoods away. And I'll just, you know, Sulfur has been a good place to live and, you know, to raise our families, and, uh, yes, it's getting bigger, it's good, but not take our neighborhoods away, you know, there's other property around town that's empty that maybe he could buy and use that and expand there, you know, that's, you know, instead of taking, going into the neighborhoods. So, I'm, that's like my suggestion, you know, there's a lot of empty property around town, you know, that he could probably use and expand his building instead of taking away our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, real quick, if you have one. Um, Austin, can you kind of, I guess, explain where we're at? This, this is not a good forum, if I'm not mistaken, is why we're bringing all this to, to get rezoned? The use of, of the property currently. If we, if it were to not pass, how would that affect?
I'm sorry, can you back up?
No, I just, be, because if we... If it doesn't pass on, on six and seven, when we get, or, which one's for Patton?
Six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
Six and seven.
No, it would be, it would be number eight, if, if it were to not be granted the expansion, um... And then we go to eight, where his business actually currently is, it, it wouldn't affect...
The outward would want to remove that one if the, if it's...
Okay. Yeah, eight was supposed to be contingent upon six and seven, that's...
Perfect, thank you.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ms. Jones, so you know, um, when you mentioned reference to the Burns property, the Burns tree service, that never did come before zoning?
Oh, it didn't?
No, ma'am.
Right before, uh...
The signs were posted, but it got pulled.
Okay.
It, it did several years earlier.
Well, that would have been prior to zoning. Well, six years, four, six years.
Second time he pulled the signs.
Okay. So that's during my time that I know, that I inquired about the, the city, and that's the only time that was relevant. Just, you know, just want a clarification.
So, is there any other...
Also, I'd like to ask a question, Ms. Jones? I'm sorry, I need to be recognized and stuff. Um, had you called and filed complaints with the Kim Cool or, or previous owners, current owners, or the city with any noise issues?
Um, I did. I called, um, the police, I believe, because it was...
Would you mind, would you mind going back?
Okay. It's been a while, uh, I try to, I try not to cause too many issues because, anyway, um... Yes, I did call, um, about the pipe beating at two AM, what he referred to, and he had it...
Did we take care of that in a satisfactory time?
Yes, it never happened again, thank you, yes, sure did. I don't...
I'm Bill of Law, I live here in town. Now, I don't have a problem with this Kim Cool thing, you know, because I don't own anything around there, but, you know, I've talked to other council people, I've talked to other business people. Uh, what y'all need to be real aware of is all the businesses that are in Maplewood, because I know that's, that's a big concern for this city, is Maplewood. I'm saying that real nice, because, I mean, if you look where all those fine houses are over there and they decide to expand some of those businesses, and they come back here and say, well, we did it with Kim Cool, why can't we take residential property and go straight from residential and bump it up to, and I call bumping up commercial, uh, a couple of, couple of spots and extend those big warehouses that's got all the stuff for LNG over there into, into those neighborhoods in Maplewood? And, and, you know, there's even a gated community right there that could go right across the road, you know, and, uh, maybe put some offices in there. Just be careful what you do, because, I mean, uh, I know you're not tied to do that, but it would be a, a real good idea for a lawsuit if, uh, if you let somebody do something and you turn around and, well, assemble a case and, uh, and turn somebody else down. Of course, I know all of y'all are represented by council, you know, but, I mean, uh, it, it's, it's still infectious, it'll affect the city. And, uh, you know, I've seen, I've seen property go from business to, to commercial, I've seen property go from residential to business, but how many times have we gone two steps like this at once? Thank you.
That, that does beg. I can either stand up or.
Wait, wait.
You have a question.
Or a comment. I have a question of Mr. Higginbotham.
And a question.
When I called back to the thing.
Yes. This, this gentleman here makes it really good.
When it's time's up, then it's.
Okay, Mr. Higginbotham, you've already, okay, sorry.
No, it's all good.
I have a question of you, Mr. Marburger, you might answer when you get up there.
Uh, on the comment that the previous gentleman had, I assume he's speaking about the Hazel Street. Um, on the east side is commercial and industrial, on the west side is residential. That subdivision, to my knowledge, was built after those businesses were already there. So keep that in mind with what he was saying.
Well, right now, Ms. Marburger, we're talking about.
Okay.
We're not gonna compare.
Okay.
And we're just gonna vote on this one.
One thing I did want to point out, uh, Mr. Higginbotham did state he's lived in that neighborhood for ten years. That building, as it sits now, was existing when he moved in. So it wasn't a problem at the time when he moved in. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Isn't there any other? Austin, I, I know you said blue is business.
Yes.
The, the uniqueness of this neighborhood is just that unique because you nestle between business and, um, residential. Know that this is a very tough decision. I, I've also contemplated, uh, what Mr. Bill LeBlanc said about the giant leap from residential to commercial, that is just a huge leap. All of the yellow that's surrounding this blue is residential. So you're wanting to go from, uh, bear with me, I'm talking colors, I'm a teacher here, color code. So you're wanting to go from yellow, um, because your existing business is yellow. The two that you own, the twenty-six sixteen and the twenty-six oh six. Oh, that's existing?
Yeah, this is all of their business.
Right, but he's wanting the two yellows to become the commercial. He wants it to become commercial. They're residential right now.
And that's because, so currently, the current business is on business property, which was grandfathered in whenever it was zoned in two thousand and four, or two thousand and three. Commercial and industrial didn't get onto the charter until two thousand and seven, to my knowledge. So that's why we're still grandfathering this business. If it was to happen today and we were to go before y'all for that zoning, then our current Patton Street to Lena, sorry, uh, Lena to Allen Stretch along Patton would be commercial. Because back then, commercial didn't exist on the charter. That's why there's two steps.
Okay.
But Ms. Har, you see the X is going up into the yellow?
Yes.
Those two into the yellows and it's going, it would be to bring those to pink.
Right, that, that was my question. It would move into pink, purple, whatever pink.
The number eight would be pink also.
If six and seven pass.
Yes.
It would be to upgrade the blue.
Correct. Mr. Nezat?
I lost a lot of sleep over this. You know, I, 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 I'm having an issue justifying, um, encroaching into a residential, so my votes no.
Ms. Hardy? Um, one of the persons, uh, I'm sorry, I, I wrote several names down. I don't know if it was Ms. Jones or Mr. Higginbotham that said, um, put yourself in our residence and then consider this proposition. And I've done both. Um, this is a very tough decision. I, I guess before I say yea or nay, um, prior to his proposition, I, I don't think you all had much noise complaints?
None.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, so I'm gonna say nay. Ms. Abchar?
Unfortunately, we are going as a city, Patton Street, that area in particular is really being, really developing to a commercial area. I'm not voting.
Yes. Ms. Thomas? Oh, I'm sorry. She said yes. And Ms. Ellender? Yes. Motion failed. Okay, so item number seven. It's twenty-six oh six from residential to commercial for allow for expansion of current business located at seven, three seventeen Patton Street, ordinance fifty-nine twenty-three, Mr. Nezat?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion, I'm sorry.
And second? Okay, is there anyone who wants to get up and speak on this, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Coral Hardy. I'm at one oh four Orchard in Sulfur, residence here for many years. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out this evening. I'm against the, uh, rezoning because, uh, like a while ago, Mr. Nezat commented, he lost a lot of sleep. And, and that's true, but a lot of us are gonna lose a lot of sleep, already lost a lot of sleep. Just think, the people live right next door to the new building. I don't live on that street, but I own three properties. But if they grant this to go through, you know, my neighbors are gonna move. And they're gonna take a loss on their building. And they've been there all their life, my father built the place. And I'm, I'm looking at all these things that money can't replace. And when you start dominoing effect all down the street, well, the business is gonna own the whole street and you're gonna have a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot building, thirty feet tall, that no one but the people who spoke for it across the street to look at that big blue building. I'm looking down the road for the future, you know? I probably can sell, it won't hurt me, but I'm looking at the ones like Ms. Debbie that's got up and spoke for her home. And it's, it's, it's more to it than just money at this particular time. It's the people home where they raised their family. And I just want to say, I hope y'all take that into consideration. And that's all I want to tell you. Thank you.
Um, Mr., uh, Ms. Duon?
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Duhon. Uh, my husband and I, Mark, live at twenty-six oh two Allen Street for the past twenty-four years. Um, and I want to say right now, I did email all of you guys and I said that we, uh, took possession of property in two thousand and six. I do have documentation from the clerk of courts. Uh, we did purchase that, um, August tenth of nineteen ninety-nine. So it puts us there as twenty-four years. Our home was built by my father, so I was raised there. When we moved in, Mark and I raised our children there as well. Three outstanding citizens, um, two of my daughter, well, my two daughters are here. Um, Laura behind me, she is a teacher. She's been teaching for fifteen years, not once but twice Teacher of the Year, um, for her school. Not only does she, uh, was she Teacher of the Year, she also, and her verbiage is much more better than mine, um, she goes to Calhoun Parish, um, and they, she had, she is kind of a teach the teacher kind of a thing, that they'll make a presentation on curriculum that they have to, they go back, the teachers, that, that goes for school, goes back and teaches their teachers, um, the, the curriculum that they're to, uh, send out for the following year. Um, our son is not here in Fortino, lives in the state of Louisiana. He did serve six years, uh, with the United States Air Force, um, with the special operations. And while he was in the air force, he got himself a master's degree in artificial intelligence. Um, our youngest daughter Jessica is here right now, currently works with special needs children. But she found out today, congratulations to her, she was accepted to a program that she's gonna continue her education to go into the medical field. So in our home, we have raised three outstanding kids. And just for us to take this away, our life savings, can we move? Would you like me to hit my savings account or my retirement account? Mark wants to retire. And if I hit, to hit my savings or retirement that hard to, because, you know, the price of housing has just escalated, um, to find another place to live. Um, because this building will be twenty feet-ish, twenty, thirty feet from our home. Um, noise has never been a problem for me, I won't say that upfront. Uh, we're in a place to where we're far enough away from Kim Cool and the interstate, we don't hear a lot of noise. However, we're looking very hard at the diva, uh, the, the value of our property. What are we gonna do with it? Um, of course, yes, it's an older home, I just stated my father built it. But now it's, you know, do you wanna walk out your back door, your front door, and look at a two-story blue building? This is where we live. We have company come over, it will, you know, work a great topic, I guess, we could talk about the blue building. But, um, please, we're asking you to vote no to protect our little neighborhood. We get along great, we wave at one another, we pass one another, and we take care of one another. When we had the hurricanes back to back, um, we were sharing food, whatever we needed to do to get by. And, um, you know, we've made that connection with one another. So please vote no against the, uh, proposition.
Mr. Duon?
Uh, Mark Duon, twenty-six oh two Allen Street, Sulfur, Louisiana. I had, I was gonna say part of what she said, I didn't, she trumped me, so. This is, this is a simple case of a business trying to come to, into an established neighborhood to rezonate part of our neighborhood commercial for one person's personal gain at whose expense. At the last land meeting, uh, used to be the rezoning of the twenty-six oh two, twenty-six oh six Allen Street, it was brought up that one of the nicer neighborhoods in Sulfur, that's lower, job, honey suckled that area, which is Hazel Street and Ninety. And how these people live up against these commercial businesses, these four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. Well, Creel Steel came into existence in eighty-six, Elite Towing ninety-eight, John Bailey Construction ninety-seven, those businesses were there already. These people chose to move in that neighborhood next to commercial. Here we have a completely different issue. We have a business that wants to invade an established neighborhood, turning what is residential to commercial and disrupting the home value and piece of the whole neighborhood. Only one person will gain the expense of our neighborhood. Mr. Marburger recently told my wife that when that big, when the blue building on the corner of Patton and Allen Street was bent, was built, our homes were then devalued. I have good, on good authority from one of the most well-respected realtors in our area that if that twenty-six-foot-tall building is built next to our home, our property value will definitely go down. And a comment was made, who would want to live next to that? I know none of y'all would. If twenty-six oh six Allen Street goes commercial, Kibod Tree Service, which bought out Burns and McGoffin, and that sits on two residential lots, they're gonna wanna go commercial. If one do it, the other one wants to do it. So there goes another piece of our neighborhood. Kept Burns, uh, the tree service out of our neighborhood twice. One through a zoning hearing, the other one, he got, he read between the lines and he pulled the stakes up. He knew he wasn't gonna win again. We, as a neighborhood, neighborhood, do not want any commercial business expanding to, into our established neighborhood. This is not right or fair. If twenty-six oh six Allen Street goes commercial, it's for one person's personal gain that makes an extra dollar versus the loss of the home values and our mental health. At the end of the last land use meeting for the rezoning of twenty-six oh six Allen Street, Ms. Veronica stated that the rezoning of twenty-six oh six Allen Street is not right and this kind of things has to stop. Please send a message that the commercial businesses do not belong in any residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Mr. Nezat?
No.
Ms. Hardy? No. Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender? Yes. Motion failed. Number eight, public hearing granting a rezon to ALK Properties three seventeen Patton from business to commercial be contiguous with expansion of twenty.
That, you vote no on that one?
Okay. Can we pull her and just go ahead and vote on it?
If he wants to withdraw, then no one can say.
All right, so we're gonna withdraw that one. Number ten is a public hearing on ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenues. Oh, I'm sorry. Number nine, resolution granting a variance to Reyna Manrique, twelve thirty-one Franklin Street to allow for a mobile home to be greater than ten years nineteen ninety-six. This is my district, I'll need a motion in a second. Okay, um, I think Ms. Reyna has an interpreter, right? You wanna come up here, um, and explain to us what the reason is for you bringing your, you know, mobile home, moving it?
Okay. Okay, my, okay, my name is Reyna Manrique. You said, uh, you live in eleven twenty-two West Verdine? Uh, you for, in the Franklin Street?
You live at eleven twenty-two Verdun now? Okay, you wanna move your trailer to Franklin Street?
Yes. Um, you for, for. Um, the reason why she got it was to, was for us, my siblings and I, to have a better, um, sta, a better place to, like, grow up at. Since where we live right now, the rent's really high and she said that. And for a better stable, stable station.
Okay, so she bought the land on Franklin or she's renting it?
She bought the land at Franklin.
On Franklin?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we see the outside of it? Now, before, the rule was if it was in the city limits, you could, you had to let them do it. But that's not the rule anymore. It has to be ten years or younger or we give a better.
Or you give a better.
Right.
I, I just, for my clarity, they're moving this to Franklin Street or they?
Yes. They're moving, okay, on Verdun Street, there is a trailer, trailer park.
So they be moving.
And they have up their rent a lot and changed it to where they pay the utilities instead of, along with the rent.
They've already moved it or they can't?
They want, they can't move it till we say they can move it.
Yeah, and then the little built-on building that was built on the side where they could possibly move that?
Are they moving that?
No, ma'am.
Can you clarify which one? Is it the one that has the boards kinda showing on the?
I think that's the building they're not.
We've gotten a lot of other people looking for places to go because of this particular issue. Oh, do you wanna speak, Ms. Duon?
No, I want you to sit on the hand, I got some more land.
Okay.
And, uh, you may not know this, good one. Uh, I understand also in that mobile home park, the one that you're in now, uh, that some of the mobile homes, and I'm not saying by the current owners, uh, some of the mobile homes are kinda immobilized by them, by them cutting the tongues off of those mobile homes. Did, it, did that happen to you?
A tongue is the thing that you.
As it comes out when they.
Move it, you know, they, they move it. There's some.
The moving, the connection to move it, that, by moving. The moving, the connection to move it, that, by moving the trailer hitch. It's my understanding that the rate, the, I, I don't remember what the current, what the rental used to be, but I wanna say maybe it was around two-hundred dollars, and it's pushing seven-hundred dollars. Plus, they're no, they're paying, they're having the residents to pay some of the utilities that used to be covered. Plus, uh, now, they're no longer moving, they're yours for you, they're having you to do that. So there's quite a bit of added living expenses that's been taxed on to the residents. Is that what you're experiencing?
Yes, ma'am.
Joy, I think with older mobile homes, that you gotta cut them off, but I think that.
They just, kind of from what I understand.
There's a bolt, and you show them underneath.
And they went, was, they, I have someone, they cut them off. And they, they're, some of them are trying to get them welded back on, or something. I, 'cause they have someone that I'm related to, that's why I know that.
The, the modern way is to bolt them.
Right.
But if y'all wanted to do it, y'all could put the stipulations, like, the, the little building that they said is not to be moved, and that they skirted and all the things they're supposed to do within the appropriate days.
And the area they're moving to is for Don building, um, just to make sure that, uh, everything I'm looking at.
It's not for Don, is it? There's a mobile home park down the road, and.
I'm assuming it's zone correction, they're not adding up reasons.
I make a, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to, um, allow you to move it with these stipulations. Number one, it's gonna be safe to move, uh, with this tongue, or the trailer hitch that I'm referring to is secure, and I'm sure any mover would be able to look at that. Number two, that you cannot move that building, because the little attached building, while I'm sure you have good use for it, it, it detracts from your unit. Because without that, your unit looks, it looks good, and you can tell that you've taken care of it. And that you, when you get moved, you have thirty days to get it re-skirted, and for it to be, uh, in compliance. I'm sorry.
Anchored and skirting.
Anchored and skirting, in compliance with all of our ordinances, that, uh, is bound on any mobile homes, okay? That would be my motion.
I say no, it, 'cause it doesn't, it to trash, I mean, unless they gotta rebuild and fix it up.
What, what, what's your mom's thoughts?
She does, it's, she will do the things you said to, to.
We're gonna give you the list of things from this meeting, and you'll have it, so you'll know what to do.
And, and I know that, uh, from what I understand, the people in that car mobile home has really, um, had some very difficult days with the new owners, and I say, um, I commend you for your ability to be able to make a new location for you and your family. Thank you so much.
Is there any other discussion, anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Uh, roll call, please. Amanda was the second, and Joy even the last.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And that would be amendment.
Okay, we voted on the, the stipulations for her, and now we're voting on the resolution. Did I have a motion in a second for that? I say I need a motion in a second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Number ten is a public hearing on ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four, for the city of Salford, Louisiana, ordinance sixty-one twenty-three, Mayor Danahay. Turn it over to Ms. Ellen.
I do not have any changes or amendments, um, from my introduction last month. So if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer, if you want me to go through the introduction again, you can do that as well.
No.
Uh, have we gotten anything back from, uh, the, uh, the water?
The water rate?
Yeah, the water.
We have a meeting with the state on Wednesday, Thursday. For the rate study, so we'll have more information Thursday.
Ask the word out, or we'll respond, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Number eleven is a public hearing on ordinance setting forth water fees charged by the city of Salford, ordinance twenty, oh wait, uh, ordinance sixty-three twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
So there's no, no changes from the introduction, but, I mean, just quickly, so, you wanna know, everybody's aware, what we're proposing is an increase to the water rate of a dollar sixty-five a month, increase in the sewer rate by two dollars and fifteen cents, increase in the garbage rate of the pass-through of eighty-five cents, uh, increase in the capital recovery fee by ten cents, um, the DHH pass-through fee stays the same, so the total monthly utility billing increase is a four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay. Alright, so you said for the water fees, it was a dollar sixty-three, Ms. Ellen?
A dollar sixty-five.
Okay. How much for soon?
An increase, two dollars and fifteen cents.
It is, sir. Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Roll call, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get a motion, so.
So move. Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
I'd like to get the rate studies and no right now.
Motion carried.
Number. Wait a minute, we just did the water.
Right.
Okay. Uh, number twelve, public hearing on ordinance setting forth sewer fees charged by the city of Salford. I need a motion in a second, please. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Number thirteen is a public hearing on ordinance setting forth garbage trash collection fees charged by the city of Salford, this is in the contract.
So move, second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Number fourteen is a public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen ninety-three, MC Series, setting forth tie-in fees for water and sewer, Mayor Danahay. Ms. Ellen?
No change from the introduction last month, this, uh, you have the fee schedule. This is for our, um, residential and commercial water tap.
So move. Second.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
I'd like to hear whether they're all.
Um, okay. Where are they, Ms. Ellen?
Uh, we're proposing the one-inch residential water tap and assembly go from, uh, four-fifty to six-fifty. From, uh, the three-quarter inch residential water tap and assembly go from three-seventy-five to six-hundred.
Do we have three-seventy-five to six-hundred?
Yes. So, uh, this study had not, this had not been looked at since two thousand and sixteen. Um, the one-inch commercial water tap and meter and assembly from six-seventy-five to eight-oh-five. The two-inch commercial water tap and meter assembly from fourteen-seventy-five, that's one thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars to two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. On sewer, that is a six-inch residential sewer tap, plus an inspection fee. It's going from four hundred and seventy-five dollars to eight hundred dollars. And a six-inch commercial sewer tap. I was gonna say six, six, uh, one's residential, one's commercial. Um, and that one, the commercial one's going from six, five hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars.
Six-fifty to eight hundred, six-hundred fifty?
From five hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. LeBlanc, would you state your address, please, again?
Yeah, seven-ten Roberta Drive. Why are they going up so much?
Because we have not done any increases since two thousand and sixteen. Whenever I did a study, I looked at where, uh, our costs were in two thousand and sixteen, versus what our costs are now. Um, if I were to use that percentage, uh, of what we charged in two thousand and sixteen versus the cost, uh, it implied now, they would be more than what they are here.
No.
Uh, I also checked with, uh, Lake Charles, um, to see what their rates were, and, um, we compromised at a rate, um, less than, um, the rates that they're charging.
That's good, 'cause I don't live in Lake Charles. I don't ask questions in Lake Charles.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't see why the rates have to go up so high when our water's already so high. And then you still, you still, even though you've bought all these new filters and everything with our tax money, uh, we're paying for, for all those filters and everything with our tax money. We've got the highest tax rate anywhere, ten point two percent. You can shake your head all you want, you know, I don't know where you live, but I live here, it's ten point two percent. Well, uh, the, the thing about it is, I think that it's outrageous, you know, you're not, you're not encouraging progress when you continue to raise the rates for people to tie into city. You know, you're pushing people further out, you know? And, uh, outside of city limits, I mean, uh, my, my basic water rate at my camp is fourteen dollars a month. You know, for a lot of water, I don't know how much, but I don't ever pay over fourteen dollars a month. I wash my boat every time it comes out of the water. And we pay seventy-five up till tonight, you know? And now you're going up on the water and the tie-ins, you know? It's gonna be hard for us to continue to build houses and put the, put the money out of property tax and sales tax that pays y'all's salary in order to, 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 to build something, you know? You keep raising the stuff, you're gonna, you're gonna cripple business. Thank you for your help.
Madam Chair, just for information, the sales tax rate in unincorporated Capshaw Parish, in every city in Capshaw Parish is ten point two percent.
Ten point two?
Same everywhere. And only two, two-point-five of that goes to the city, the sheriff, the school board, and the state, and all the rest.
Whenever I did this, um, evaluation, um, I found that we, the city was actually losing money, or costs, um, exceeded what we were charging, and obviously, we can't do that. These, these costs are usually one-time for your, you know, residents here, when they first build a home. Uh, once they're in, you normally don't, unless you're a developer, um, you know, someone who's continuously building homes. So, um, because this had not been looked at since two thousand and sixteen, I now have it as part of my budget process, it will be looked at on an annual basis going forward. Repeat this from being such a shot.
Is there any other, um, comment, um, public, from the public? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance number sixteen-eleven, MC Series, which established a program to assist low-income housing, households in the payment of water, sewer, and garbage trash collection fees charged by the city of Salford, ordinance sixty-six twenty-three.
This is just increasing the utility assistance program, um, for a total discount on the bill of twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Oh, I need a motion in a second, please.
So?
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes. Number sixteen is a public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance number twelve eighteen, MC Series, which set forth a capital recovery fee charged by the city of Salford, ordinance sixty-seven twenty-three. Ms. Ellen?
This is the ten cents that I had mentioned would be an increase on the monthly utility bill. It goes straight into a capital account, um, that is for, uh, capital infrastructure, water, and sewer.
So move.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a public hearing, did we get that information removed?
No, I'm, I'm meeting with the parish on Thursday, I'm gonna ask.
Okay, we removed it, I'm sorry. Okay, um, item number eighteen is a public hearing on ordinance granting a right-of-way and authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to execute right-of-way Energy Louisiana LLC for property located on Invader Street, ordinance sixty-nine twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Just for, for energy, uh, needed access, and so, uh, it was due to his property, so this one, we're, we're granting that.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Number nineteen is a public hearing on ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property of the city of Salford and providing for the disposal thereof shop carts, ordinance seventy twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
So move, second.
Anyone from the public wish to talk on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Number twenty is a public hearing on ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Section Twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Salford to adopt the International Fire Code, ordinance seventy-one twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
So move. Second.
Okay, this is an update that is required, International Fire Code. Um, anyone from the public wish to speak on this, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes, I just, I, I don't know much about that fire code, but does it say anything in there, in the fire code about train? We don't have a fire station on, in North Salford, and, but we got a train track between us and the fire station. Does it say anything about train?
There's nothing.
Mayor Danahay?
No, it does have, it has nothing to do with that.
Okay, I, I just wonder when, when we gonna get a fire station back on in North Salford?
Ever we get, we are able to get a fire station, or will we get a fire station? And the building that we currently sit in will be a fire station.
What's that, sir?
The building that we currently sit in at City Hall will be a fire station one day.
Is that when we tear that building down that we bought and build another? After that?
Well, I'm just saying the one that we currently sit in will be a fire station one day.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue? Item.
I would.
Okay, uh, are you on here, Ms.?
No, I didn't, it's.
Well, I'm gonna put you on this one, you already signed one, right?
Yeah.
And I'll put you on this number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does that, that Cindy Robertson, six-two-four West Verdun, does that make any changes to the, what we have? No?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
I'm sorry, go, go ask your question, I interrupted.
No, that's okay, if, it, does it make any changes in what we as homeowners have to do?
No.
Thank you.
For construction.
For construction?
Gotcha.
Okay, um, if there's anyone else from the public? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes. Item number twenty one is a public hearing on ordinance amending chapter five, section twenty one of the code of ordinances of the city of Sulphur to adopt the twenty twenty one international building code, ordinance seventy two twenty three.
So move. Second.
And this is updating chapter five of the international building code. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Sorry, I just turned my phone off. Um roll call please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Item number twenty two is an introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign the Louisiana DOTD maintenance agreement for mowing and litter pickup for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, ordinance seventy three twenty three.
So move. Second.
And this says that, you wanna say something?
Yeah, just for a quick, uh this is an annual um agreement that we have with DOTD. Uh they will pay ten thousand eight hundred forty dollars on a semi annual basis for us to pick up litter and mow in those specific areas.
Um this is an introduction. It will come up next month as a resolution. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Number twenty three is an introduction of ordinance entering into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Westlake for salaries for the marshal's office, ordinance seventy four twenty three, Mayor Danahay.
Uh the marshal has requested an additional deputy. Uh we have uh went and spoke with Westlake, uh they have never contributed towards the marshal's office before. Um the new mayor and finance director has agreed to contribute up to twenty five thousand dollars for the salary of a native, a deputy.
So move. Second.
This is an introduction, it will come up at the next meeting as a resolution, anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Number twenty five is a resolution awarding low bid received for Sulphur Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase Two, S B R process improvements and Hurricane Laura damage repairs, D R four five five nine L A, Louisiana FEMA CAT E construction. Resolution twenty three twenty three, Mayor Danahay.
Real quick, Madam Chair, um just to give you an idea of what kind of expense goes into our wastewater facility. We have a regional wastewater facility, we have other uh locales uh waste as well. This one particular segment of that, that plan, this one item will be seven million dollars. Just the one item. And we're talking about multiple step process through that treatment system. So it's a very expensive service that we provide. Uh I'll tell people is that everything that goes in has to be corrosion free, uh corrosive uh you know, free of corrosion and user sustainable, because it goes into, and everything has to be engineered that goes into the service expensive service to provide, so once again, this, this recommendation is for sixty million nine hundred ninety six thousand dollars, hundred million dollars. Sixty million nine hundred ninety six thousand dollars.
Also, we have submitted this for FEMA and um we're, we're seeking reimbursement for about fifty percent of the costs. We're with, the engineers were able to relate about fifty percent of the damage towards storm related.
Um.
So move.
Second.
Alright, um roll call, anyone from the public wish to speak?
I think I put that on mic.
Yes, ma'am, you certainly did.
Okay. Cindy Robertson, six two four West Verdine, commend the city, this is something that I've been getting um notices from the EPA about the um problems that we have with our wastewater, so I'm really glad that y'all are able to finally get to it. I would um remind you that there are funds available, grants available through the um uh the new funding for environmental quality stuff that they, that has uh come down from the Biden administration. So if you, you know, were willing, I have people ready and willing to help with that grant writing process if y'all would like to avail yourselves of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call.
Uh Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Um number twenty six reads, resolution ordering and calling tax renewal elections to be held in the city of Sulphur, Louisiana on November eighteenth, twenty twenty three, for the purpose of submitting to the electors residing in the city, two propositions, one to renew a special ad valorem ta- ad valorem of five mils for fire protection and one to renew a special ad valorem tax of five mils for street improvements.
This is a renewal only.
Right.
There's nothing change. No changes, no increases, so forth, and everything is for fire protection and uh street improvements.
It's actually gonna be a slight decrease because, because of the hurricanes, um the taxes were allowed to roll up to compensate us for the fact of the base decrease. Um but when you do the renewal, you renew it at the original rate, so maybe it's a little bit decreased.
Um obviously, it's, it's an important um election. Um any chance we couldn't have gotten it in conjunction with the uh election coming up, is it in October?
Yes, you have two election dates, you got one in October, one in November. You recall, we have the uh home charter uh submissions that will be voted on in October and this will be in this, I mean in November.
Always concerned with voter turnout, you know, when it's a couple of item on, items on the ballot.
They'll be the runoff for the governor's race.
Could be, okay.
It should be a heavy election.
Great, great, well, that's strategic. Take a motion?
Second.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes. Okay, number twenty seven. Resolution authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign a quick claim deed between the city of Sulphur and Andrew John Dross Jr. and Dorothy K. Dross for a fifteen foot strip of property in Rose Park Number Five, property to the east of twenty seven twenty nine St. Francis Street. Um resolution twenty five twenty three.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so y'all wanna know what a quick change is? Everybody? Okay.
This is a piece of property that um we brought to our attention, we didn't even know at the time that we had possession of this property. And uh Mr. Andrew Dross uh where it's interested in this piece of property. It, it really served no purpose between the two neighbors, so uh we'll go ahead and, and make that
Okay, uh anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Roll call please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Number twenty eight is a resolution accepting the municipal water pollution prevention environmental audit report dated April twelfth, twenty twenty three, resolution twenty six twenty three, Mr. Abrams?
Uh yes, this is a annual report that we submit to D E Q, um and it just goes over uh different parts, the effluent flow, effluent quality, uh major, the treatment system. Um so this year, we got a score of one twenty seven and a half out of a total of five hundred and sixty. Um and last year, we had a score of one forty, so the lower the score, the better.
Oh, good. Alright, anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
Yeah.
Roll call please. Didn't we do the? Motion a second?
No, I don't have a motion.
Okay, I need a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, this is number twenty nine is public comment. I would ask, three minutes per speaker, only speak one time per item. Is there anyone here that wants to talk? Ms. Anderson?
I'm Robertson.
I'm sorry. I knew it was son at the end.
As, as many times as I've said my name up here.
I know, I'm sorry.
Uh Cindy Robertson, six two four West Verdine. Um I wanted to, again, bring up the um water quality issue. Um I want to uh reiterate that the Louisiana Department of Health regulations, which are the ones that the city currently abides by, are not the safest that they could be. There's a lot of research that has gone on in the last twenty to forty years. Um and those regulations have not been updated since then, except for the lead regulation, and it has been updated. But it would be really wonderful to see our city be proactive about taking advantage of the grant monies available through the IRA, which always sounds weird saying that, it doesn't seem like it's, you know, um available to upgrade and update and improve our water system so that we can tout that as a selling point for the city. The monies are there, we just need to take advantage of them and make sure that the quality of our water is not just up to the minimal regulation, but actually good, safe water. Thank, oh, and again, I have people who are ready to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um anyone from the?
I'm just saying we have a fight for um grant money through the water sector program uh for updates and upgrades and we are working through that process, the rate study that we made on on Thursday was part of the requirement for that grant.
Alright. Austin?
School's out soon.
Be careful.
Yes.
Um. Go on.
Uh Sulphur High Baseball, Thursday. The game, I think, is moved to five, but uh it's great, great turnout hopefully, and hope the weather be good.
Alright. You're ready, isn't it?